Open meeting. We'll move into our open meeting as soon as we had the recording on and all members in place. So this is the thirty-seventh meeting of the one hundred and forty-third council, the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And I'm glad you've all waited through our public meeting to get to here tonight. I'd like to first thank councillor Clark for covering for me last week. Here an admirable job was done and I've I've searched and I can't I can't find anything you've taken out of my office or anything. So, thank you. Great job, Gary. And first of all, I'll ask for disclosures of interest from any of the members. Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes.
I have motion that the minutes of the meeting held on October the second, twenty twenty-three be confirmed. Moved by councillor Peter, second by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie? Next.
Council will now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to community improvement plan project for the property at one fifty-one Wellington Street. The director of planning and building services will provide some additional information as requested by council. And your worship, when that happens, I will then read the motion.
Super. Mr. Pompilly, I guess that's you.
Yes, thank you, your worship and through you to rest of council. I had a chance to provide some of that information to some of the councillors that had asked for additional information. The units that we have here are five bachelor residential units that have all been refurbished, alt code and consistent with the zoning bylaw and it's in an area that's eligible for CIP in order to build, bring the building back up to code. So there's two units on the main level, two on the second floor and one in the basement. And they've all been took advantage of the CIP program, which is there to do. It's there to support. And and so the units are being refurbished. They are small units, so they'll be affordable units, something that's needed in the community. And in a, in a, right in the heart of the city. So I really don't have much more to offer. I can make some of those plans available to the rest of council if if that is something that that they need. But this is a typical type of application, the normal type of application that we see through our CIP program to help property owners bring their rental properties or their homes up to standard.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Wiki. Councillor Wiki, I'll give you a promotion.
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Pompilly. And my concern last week was that when it stated that they were adding five units, I thought, like, aren't there like four in there already? Like, we're gonna have nine in there. So and then we didn't have like the actual plan of it. So I just wanted to do my due diligence to make sure that was happening. And Mr. Pompilly provided me with the 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 deck and it was extensive. And it showed the floor plan, so I'm I'm good with that now. And when when it said add, it was, it was, it wasn't adding it to four that were already there. So I'm happy now that I've seen all the plans and everything's good. And I think it's a great development of that spot. Thanks.
Further questions or comments? You have a motion, Madam Clark.
Thank you, worship. Motion that report PD thirty-six, twenty twenty-three relating to the community improvement project by one three, three, five, nine, oh, six, nine, Canada, Inc., for one fifty-one Wellington Street. Be received for information and further council approve a community improvement residential grant and planning and building fees grant for application two zero, two, three, one, thirty, as submitted by one three, three, five, nine, oh, six, nine, Canada, Inc., for one fifty-one Wellington Street. Moved by councillor Wiki, second by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Let's carry.
Next item relates to community improvement program residential grant for the property at fifty Manitoba. Have motion that report PD thirty-nine, twenty twenty-three relating to that residential grant for fifty Manitoba. Be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a community improvement program grant acknowledgement agreement with Alexander Kirchner relating to CIP application twenty twenty-three dash one, two, three. Moved by councillor Herbert, second by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Let's carry.
Next item relates to the city response to the housing affordability task forces recommendations. Have motion that report ADM twenty-nine, twenty-three relating to the task forces recommendations be received for information. And further, council endorse the top five task force recommendations being proposed by senior administration and direct staff to submit a response before the October sixteenth deadline. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, second by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments, councillor Wiki, then councillor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you very much, your worship. I noted under number five, where it says recommendation twenty-one, that there is a municipality set already binding list that defines which constitutes complete application. And I just, I I I want to put on my assistant planner's hat and say that 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 scares me a little bit because, boy, oh, boy, you've you paint yourself in a corner. So somebody's, you know, somebody figures out a way around something and you're stuck with it. And I just want to note that if I was the planner, I'd be a little concerned about the the binding list. And of course, we don't want to be saying, oh, yeah, that, and then, oh, yeah, that, and oh, yeah, that. But this puts a lot of pressure on us certainly to be extremely vigilant and comprehensive in the planning department. So I just want to say that that's a concern of mine and and that's a lot of pressure in the planning department to make sure that they can try to avoid odd possibilities that will challenge us. Thank you.
Councillor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions if I could. What I didn't see in these five recommendations is fostering the partnerships that we've had in the past, such as what we're doing with tiny homes. I don't want that to be seen as a one and done. Or going back to victory homes, which we've talked about in this area as a recommendation, because those partnerships that we have created, fostering those partnerships are very instrumental in moving forward to help get housing built in their community. Also, again, with partnership partnerships, prefab partnership with Element Five, as an example, that are doing some really great work with residential housing. I didn't see that anywhere in the report. And then the next one is a very specific question in regards to number two. It says recommendation number five. Permit as of right, secondary suites, garden suites, laneway houses, province-wide. I see that and I'm just wondering if that is taken into consideration. Has there been any consideration given to how is it going to be serviced? Is it a year-round servicing? Is it servicing provided from the residential unit as a supplementary existing one? What is the servicing capacity with the main residence? Is that going to be allowed to be enhanced or is it going to be diminished by allowing permit as right, as of right, secondary suites, et cetera? Those are just some of my concerns, especially with water, wastewater, electricity, et cetera, with the main residence. I was hoping to get an answer to that specific question, if I could, please.
City manager or director of planning?
I'm happy to start, your worship, through you, the members of council. Thank you for the question. And as it relates to the choice of the five recommendations, I'm just looking through the attachment to to identify. You talked about partnerships. The recommendations don't specifically speak to partnerships. Number forty-six speaks to undertake multi-stakeholder education program to promote steel trades. I I would suggest that our partnerships exist. It's important for us as a community and it's important for us as a municipality and a service manager in housing to ensure that we have those partnerships. This, the purpose of this activity was to pick from among the the number of recommendations that came from the housing task force. So I I I want to assure council, though, that partnerships are important. They will happen and they'll continue to happen. It's one of the mechanisms by which housing is created in this community. This was intended to be also a market housing reality as well. So I don't want to give the impression that that council, to council that we wouldn't be doing that. As it relates to servicing, I will turn to the planner in the room, not that councillor Wiki isn't one to.
Yep, through your, your worship, that's a great question. As far as servicing, yep, the the those uses are permitted as of right. But they are still subject to going through a building permit process and where they'd have to demonstrate that there's adequate services available on that site or the added unit or two units from that site. So it 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 protections are there to ensure that there won't be an overburden to the services.
Go ahead, councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. While you're there, if I have one more. So only because it was relevant a couple of days before the long weekend, there was a discussion or a news article about a house located in the back of a residential unit. And the ability for them to have street access was somewhat prohibited. So it was a bit of a question with a rear residence on another residential property. And I'm just wondering, do they, will they have to have street access? Or do they access the street going through the residence that's in front of them? How would that, something like that, be handled?
Mr. Pompilly on that one?
Yep, sure. It's difficult to kind of understand without knowing the property. But if somebody's adding a second unit to a building, that's what I'm, but I'm assuming. And that unit is is located in the rear of the home. There's no requirement that that unit has to have street frontage because the building that it's part of has 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 street frontage. I'm not sure if I, if.
Would that be a shared driveway situation?
I'd be, yeah, they would share driveway. So they're sharing that access point, which is the driveway. But without knowing the specifics of that property, it's something that I'd be happy to look into to ensure that it followed that this particular property went through the proper process and protocols in order to be established. Because if that would help, I'd be happy to do that.
Councillor Baldwin Sands, you have more for Mr. Pompilly?
Thank you. It was just an article that was in the Free Press a couple of days ago that there is a residential unit behind as an existing residential unit, so a brand new one. But the only way that they have to access, to get out of their house into the street is basically through the residence that's in front of them. And I'm, I just was puzzled as to why, whether it was done in the City of London or if it was done at one of the neighbouring communities, I don't know. But that kind of stymied when I read that and it stuck out because this was on the agenda for today.
Councillor Clark?
Uh, thank you. My question to the planner is, is, I I realize we're we're dealing with five recommendations, but it was part of the whole conversation that they probably had was the idea of speeding up things. And and so we just had a, had one today with the the public meeting, the idea of some exemptions and variances. So I'm just wondering if if it's time, I mean, part of our conversation was looking at rear yard, side yard, front yard minimums. And the whole idea of infills and and trying to do more affordable housing, whether it's time that we take a look and review at what our minimums are so that it might speed up the process where this that kind of stuff doesn't have to come to us for for a variance. And it would just be part of the meeting that you had with the with the proponent.
Mr. Pompilly, part of the OP?
Yep, yep, through your worship. Yes, that is. That's it. It's kind of a sequential thing. Once we update our OP, we're then required to update our zoning bylaw. And we're and we and but part of what we're doing right now in anticipation of that is we're looking at, you know, what are, we're tracking, what are the most typical minor variances that we're faced with with our current zoning bylaw? So, you know, what what are those restrictive requirements that are in place right now in our zoning bylaw? So that when we do update our our bylaw, we're bringing in regulations that we know are more relevant in today's environment than, you know, from nineteen sixty, when the bylaw was was first established. So so we are looking at that to to look at the standards to ensure that they're in line with with what's being developed today. And in the event that that process gets prolonged unnecessarily, we could still bring forward some amendments, just standalone amendments right now to sort of clean up some of those regulations, like parking is a major one. You always see ones, and it was in the the slide deck that Mr. McCoon had up for setbacks for rear yard decks. That's a standard that's always being amended or a variance that's often applied for. That's that's one that we should just be bringing forward and and updating that. So that is part of the process of what we're looking at. And it does have the benefit of speeding up that approval process for proponents as well.
Further questions or comments? If you don't mind a comment from the chair, this was, this came from the Minister of Housing as a rec, as a group of recommendations through the, through, through council and the mayor to say, which ones do you like best? Would you rank five for us so we can look at how we could improve the speed of approving houses? I immediately said, let's talk to the city manager and let's talk to council about, let's try and come up with what we think five that would best fit St. Thomas. And I thank you tonight for being part of that discussion. So we can send this on by the sixteenth to the Minister of Housing and say, here's what St. Thomas thinks. And I think you'll find a lot of Ontario thinking similar ways, but there'll be different things in some other communities. So thank you for your thoughts tonight. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Unless there are any further items from the members under strategic direction and development, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to the twenty twenty-three Remembrance Day Ceremony and a request for road closure. Have motion that report ES fifty-eight, twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-three Remembrance Day Ceremony road closure. Be received for information. And further, the council approved the temporary closure of Moore Street between Talbot Street to Centre Street from eight AM to one PM on Saturday, November the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to allow for the Remembrance Day Ceremony. Moved by councillor Kohler, second by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Unless there are any further items from the members under this committee, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. A first item relates to the Willow Sheen walkway lighting. I have a motion that report PR twenty-seven, twenty-three relating to Willow Sheen walkway lighting. Be received for information. And further, council approved that the STEAM Education Centre staff can proceed with the proposed Willow Sheen walkway lighting project. Moved by councillor Clark, second by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments, councillor Peters?
Thanks, worship. I see Jeff Razan. Can someone tell me and all of us what Willow Sheen means?
I'm smart because I asked that question this afternoon myself.
I can get back to you on that, your worship. I have absolutely no idea. That came through meetings with the STEAM group.
Well, I see Andrew here tonight. Andrew, if you have the answer, I'll take it from you. Sure, come on up. We don't get to say hi to you very often. You help us with a lot of projects. But I read the words today and said, what does this mean?
Uh, so hi, everybody. So Willow Sheen is simply the title of the mural. There's a artist named Media. His real name is Yvonne Blake and he painted that back in two thousand and twenty. And basically, the artwork is a kind of a meditation on the impact of technology on nature. So there's trees in there. So I believe that's sort of the origins of the Willow, the Willow Sheen concept. So, yeah, that's, it's really just a reference to the artwork.
Well, great. Andrew, while you're here, I want to introduce you to folks at home. They don't always get to see somebody who's helped this community a lot with things like murals and and even got me on a scooter the other day. And the the great things that you and your your group, the young and free press have been doing in our community, I wanted to say thank you while we had you in front of us.
Uh, well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure always to add these projects to St. Thomas. And in this case, we're looking at sort of enhancing some of our walkways because we have some funding to do events for next summer. So we want to make those spaces as beautiful as we can.
Super. Further questions or comments, councillor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I I was gonna say the same thing to Andrew. The work you do throughout the city over the past three or four or five years is tremendous for our city. I mean, your heart is with the city. And this is just another project to show that you want St. Thomas to look better all around. So so thank you to you and your team and for continually thinking of us and doing all these projects for us. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Unless there are any further items from the members under this committee, we'll now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to the twenty twenty-two annual report for building permit fees. I have motion that report TR seventeen, twenty-three relating to twenty twenty-two annual report for building permit fees. Be received for information. I move by councillor Wiki, second by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments on the building permit fee report? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Do we have any control over the indirect costs? Do we have any type of control over it? Is it just happens?
Well, I'm gonna ask the treasurer because he he knows all about indirect costs.
Well, I I printed it out because I'm just curious to say, do we have control over it? Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, your worship. Indirect costs are more of the management side of supervising and directing people. The direct costs are the people out doing the work. Indirect costs are the management side of the.
So do we actually control it or not?
Sure.
We do, eh? Okay, thank you then.
Further questions or comments on the building permit report? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next report relates to the twenty twenty-two development charges. I have motion that report TR eighteen, twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-two development charges. Be received for information. Moved by councillor Wiki. Second by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments on the development charge report? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to membership in the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. I have motion that report ADM thirty, twenty-three relating to membership in the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Be received for information. And further, that a request for funding to cover the cost of membership in the Federation of Canadian Municipalities be forwarded to and considered as part of the annual operating budget process, beginning with the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Wiki.
Questions or comments, councillor Baldwin Sands?
I fully support this and I thank staff for having us here in tonight so that we can move forward. I have learned so much from Federation of Canadian Municipalities, specifically on the Green Municipal Fund and all of the related courses that they have that are posted through their website. They're very instrumental in in helping to come to a lot of really innovative initiatives that are happening across Canada. And that is why I do fully support this initiative. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, councillor Wiki?
Thanks, your worship. This is another one of those things where I always think it's like a relatively low-leverage situation. We can, we can get a membership, try it for a few years, see if it benefits us and then talk about it again in a few years and see what happens. So I support this one for sure.
Great. Further questions? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Let's carry.
Unless there are any further items from the members under corporate governance and administration?
Councillor, councillor Peters?
Thanks, worship. Committee of Adjustment. I see there's a meeting coming up on the twenty-eighth of, or twenty-sixth of October regarding your proposal by CN. And some of us from the previous council remember that we did have some discussions about some of these lands. And what troubles me, though, is what we discussed then way back when and what we're seeing in front of us now is not the same. And I think I may have approached things a little differently had I seen what CN is proposing in their committee of adjustment. What concerns me about the committee of adjustment is that there is still a Canadian Transportation Authority order that was put in place in November of nineteen ninety. And in that order, order number two, it says that CN is to allow a connection to the Talbot sub, now known as the Keuga. Yep. If you follow this proposal through, there is no opportunity for connection because CN is going to sell all the land. And that cuts off PSDR and that totally changes anything for the future of any potential of getting the railway in. Because this is, the the way I read, if you take a look in the ad that was in the Times Journal today, this is all the CN North yards. This is the north end of station, north end of St. Catherine, north end of Hiawatha. It's a lot bigger than anything that I ever thought of. And I would really like to hear back from staff. Because why didn't CN, if CN has changed what they want to do with those lands, I believe that there's an obligation of a pecking order that CN needs to offer the lands to the federal government first, provincial government second, and the municipal government third. And if see, I I'd like to know if CN offered up this proposal to the city in advance because I don't believe they did. And I don't believe that this October twenty-sixth meeting is, should be in order. So I'm gonna, I'll leave it with staff. I'd love to hear back, but I'm really concerned of what CN is up to with this.
Uh, Mr. Pompilly, would you like to, I know, I know I saw something in correspondence back and forth today with you on this, so.
No, I'll, I'll provide just a brief, brief comment through through your worship. Yes, no, we were, we were aware of this consent application. The notice was going to be a council's agenda next week and I I planned to raise it at that time, too, to flag the concern for to council regarding this consent application. We have raised those concerns to the applicant here for the consent. And I've tried to reach out directly to to CN to express that, you know, there is a municipal interest here. And that's why I was wanting to get that direction from council that there is an interest in the city purchasing this this parcel. And that's what I, I'll come back with more information next week when it's on, when the notice is on the agenda. But I, that's all I can share at this point. But we are aware of it. I've I've put, I've got a couple of calls into a contact for CN just to have some communication with them to find out, you know, what, you know, what opportunity is there for the city to to get involved here? We could, we could always just not recommend approval of the consent because there's a municipal interest in this parcel. That's, that's kind of where I think we're, we're going.
I'll go back to you, councillor.
Thanks, worship. I will send, I will send Lou a copy of the nineteen ninety order. I'll press send later this evening to you, just so you have that. Because it's not only the north-south connection, but that order also says that CN is to replace the diamond at the Talbot sub. And CN has scrapped that diamond. So I I'm just really concerned about what's, and I'll, I'll leave it be for now.
Right. And I'll agree with councillor Peters. This is something for three decades we've been fighting for, that reconnection of the north-south rail line to St. Thomas. And so it's more than just land now becoming available. Although what they're offering seems like a very nice piece that could add to our, to us also. But it's not us looking for good land to develop. It's us looking for CN to first do what they've been ordered to do. And then if indeed they no longer want the piece, we we certainly will make our our decisions after the fact. As as we said in the past, we've missed out a couple of times on rail pieces in this community. Glad you're on top of it, Lou. Great. Councillor Clark?
Through you, I'm not sure who, but maybe Steve. Who enforces that order and why hasn't it been acted on after all these years?
Because CN acts like a country of its own rather than a company of its own. I mean, I don't mind saying it here. I've been dealing with them as the Member of Parliament and as the mayor of this community for not only on that line, but other areas of that line being reconnected. When we, as a federal govern, when I was in in the federal government, we funded a great deal of LMPS line and bringing it back to life and moving the what is now the Tourism Office there, those types of things, with full intent that this, this transportation order would be enforced. We, over the time now that I've been mayor, have had more than one conversation with CN on the reconnection of the line. And they're about as easily as they can be on the reconnection of the line. I don't mind saying that in in public about them. It's, it's, they, they've come up with fifteen different ways, but it's like going to Hamilton and back to connect the line. So it's just, go ahead.
Can we not seek some legal opinion on that then? As a way to move forward, I mean?
I suppose we could. The, as we said, we've been dealing with them from an engineering point of view, from a, from a, through our, our chief engineer for a number of years on that. And before my time or your time, it's been, was going on before that. Sure. Councillor Peters, you know more than me.
Just, just quickly on it. So back in nineteen ninety, this, this all stems from CN starting to rip out railway track. And Port Stanley Terminal Rail attempted, there was, there was still some rail left up to what I call the queso. So they had either one option of going through the downtown railway lands to see, to the CP line or going north. The judge at the time, O'Brien, said no to the CP connection. The judge at the time, O'Brien, said no to the CP connection um, and yes to the north-south connection. So it was actually P, Port Stanley Terminal Railway that, that. Got the, the train in motion, so to speak, to have this order in place. So I think we may actually want to talk to PSDR about some of this too.
Right, sure. It would be a group effort to continue the process, but it's, it's been a long process in my political career and, and still carries on. So let's. So as it goes to committee of adjustment, we may have some authorities, but we'll just leave it at that and we'll let Mr. Pompilly report back. Further questions on this topic? Seeing none, next?
There are no further items from the members under this committee. Uh, council will now reconvene in regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee of the whole, as recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor, any opposed? Carry.
No reports of committees this evening. We'll now move into petitions and communications. Uh, first is a request for a proclamation from the Elgin-St. Thomas Coalition to end poverty. I have a motion that the council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim October seventeenth, twenty twenty three as International Day to eradicate poverty in the city of St. Thomas. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor, any opposed? Carry.
Next item is a copy of a resolution addressed to the Honourable Doug Ford Premier. Uh, from the town of Wasaga Beach regarding unsanctioned car rallies. Uh, next item is a copy of a resolution, again, addressed to the Honourable Doug Ford. From the town of Witchurch-Stowe regarding illegal land use enforcement. Uh, final item is a letter received from the Catfish Creek Conservation Authority regarding the authority's programs and service guide. And providing a progress report to the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks regarding the implementation of a transition plan under Ontario Regulation six eighty seven slash twenty one. Uh, your worship, that concludes the items on the agenda under petitions unless the members have any other items of petition. We'll now move into unfinished business of council. Uh, seeing no items from the members, we'll now move into new business of council. Uh, your worship, seeing no items under new business, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor, any opposed? Carry.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Kohler, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, any opposed? Carry.
Thank you, madam clerk. First bylaw, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the tenth day of October, twenty twenty three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry, next bylaw, please.
Second bylaws, a bylaw to amend bylaw forty five dash eighty nine, being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and parking of motor vehicles. This relates to parking spaces in the upper St. Catherine Street parking lot.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry, next bylaw, please.
Third bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one seven one, one six six four Ontario Inc. This relates to a residential loan agreement under the Community Improvement Program for four ninety six Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? It's carried, next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one seven one, one six six four Ontario Inc. This relates to heritage facade and building improvement loan agreement under the Community Improvement Program, also for the property at four ninety six Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? It's carried, next bylaw, please.
Fifth and final bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk uh, to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one two three seven, one six six Ontario Limited. This relates to a heritage facade and building improvement loan agreement under the Community Improvement Program for the property at three oh nine Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? It's carried.
I rise to report the successful passing of five bylaws.
Thank you.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Kohler, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the five bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time and grossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor, any opposed? Carry.
Next order of business are, is public notice. Uh, first notice is that a public meeting will be held on October sixteenth, twenty twenty three at six PM regarding the proposed twenty twenty four sewage service rate fees and charges. As well as the proposed twenty twenty four water consumption rate, water supply fees and charges change. Um, second, uh, notices hereby provided that administration intends to introduce a report and bylaw at the November sixth, twenty twenty three council meeting. Relating to the proposed twenty twenty four sewage service rate fees and charges change. As well as the proposed twenty twenty four water consumption rate, water supply fees and charges change. And no notices of motion this evening, your worship. There is a need to move into closed session.
If I could, if I could just stop you before then and ask permission to move back to new business?
Certainly. Thank you, your worship.
It is a huge event happening this Saturday, Oktoberfest downtown St. Thomas, and it's so huge, I forgot to mention. Uh, one to eight on Talbot Street, we're celebrating two things. The reopening of Talbot Street. And the re, the finish of the majority of the construction on Talbot Street, which we'll all be so pleased to see. I think I went through Shedden today to cross from the south of Talbot to north of Talbot. But with the paving going on, it was worth the, worth the drive to see how great a job they're doing on Talbot Street. So it's about the reopening of Talbot Street, but we thought we'd celebrate it with an event called Oktoberfest. So from one to eight on Talbot Street, we'll cut a ribbon and reopen the street, we'll tap a keg. Could, you know, consume if you feel you should. And there'll be a number of great uh, of uh, oompa pa bands and, and other great Oktoberfest events happening this Saturday on Talbot Street from one till eight. So just wanted to make sure we shared that with the public and with council. So we're um, the, I'm digging through my closet for my leader hose. Be very afraid. Sorry, madam clerk.
Thank you, your worship. I might need to go and see that. Uh, at this time, uh, there is a need to move into closed session. I have a motion that this meeting be closed to deal with the position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on. Or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Before we vote, I'll say what I normally do. We're about to go into closed session. We have finished our open session and voted on all of the things that were in open session. We'll have a, any uh, reason to come out of closed session will be to go to open session simply to adjourn for the evening. Or to vote on anything that we've done in closed session. So thank you for all of you that have joined us tonight and we will move now to closed session. All those in favor, any opposed? Carry.